Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Mrs. Harold?
Here.
Mr. Pico?
Here.
Mr. Valley?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Yagnum?
Here.
Mr. Muscatello?
Here.
Mrs. Scherfstein?
Here.
We are all here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, sunshine law statement. This is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes that in compliance with chapter 231 of the public laws of 1975 entitled The Open Public Meetings Act, Stanhope Board of Education located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the municipal clerk of the borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and on the Stanhope Public Schools website setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. Our revised mission statement, the Stanhope School District in partnership with the community commits to provide a quality comprehensive education for all learners with equal emphasis on academic excellence and citizenship through values, respect, and service. And our vision statement, our vision is to inspire and cultivate a community of innovative, curious, compassionate, and globally minded learners equipped with the knowledge, problem-solving skills, and the ability to persevere to make a positive impact on society and shape a better future. There will be two executive sessions held for the purpose of residency and personnel. Formal action may be taken. We are up to presentations.
All right, I'm very excited and equally proud to welcome back Dominic LaLama and Charlie Harold. They are our two student advocates to the Board of Education. This is a brand new position that was started this year. Charlie and Dominic worked directly with me for much of the school year, trying to be the voice of our student body. They put together some surveys. First survey led to some pretty significant changes to our school, and the most recent one, they'll describe in greater detail, is to help measure and assess school culture and climate with a specific emphasis on harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We met together, we reviewed some of the results, and together we came up with some ideas moving forward that our district, our administration, and our board can consider to help improve climate culture and help reduce any kind of HIV in our school district. So Charlie and Dominic, first, thank you. Good luck at graduation on Friday. Your last real strong contribution to our district. Take it away. Thank you, guys.
So, in our survey, one of the topics of it was ways to prevent or diminish bullying to improve the school.
So, one thing we came up with to try and help this problem is an easier and more comfortable way for students to report bullying, and notably, the ability to report anonymously. One way we thought of doing this was an app or web-based method that students could use both inside school and outside of school to report the bullying they see. Yeah.
So, the next thing we wanted to do was discourage students from engaging in inappropriate and/or harmful interactions with peers both inside and outside of the school. Ways we could do this would be a possible point or demerit system within the code of conduct, and then also listing specific infractions related to HIV in the code of conduct with their potential consequences. Because we've noticed, like, students don't know what's gonna happen based off their actions, and with it being in the code of conduct, then students would know what they're getting themselves into.
Another thing we came up with was to improve rapport between students and staff for the purpose of developing trust. This is just kinda to make the students feel a bit more comfortable opening up to the staff to report any problems, because sometimes students can feel a bit overwhelmed when trying to go report bullying. And we also found a way, no, we didn't find a way yet, but we suggested that there be more frequent quote-unquote check-ins with school counselors and administration and students, just to kinda discuss what's going on currently at the school, like, within the student body. So, yeah.
The next we could do was talk about, like, trainings or just opportunities to help the students better understand the consequences of their words and actions. So, we think that that would help the students be able to understand why harassment, intimidation, and bullying is harmful to others.
And then, of course, we just have the easy option of just having the students be nicer to each other. However, that doesn't always work. Students don't always listen. So, yeah, this one probably doesn't seem that likely. That's why it has the least amount of stuff written about it.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board have questions?
Just a comment.
Yes?
Hey, great idea, especially the demerit system. Off the top of your head, is there any ways to reward good behavior?
We have the ticket system.
Yeah, we have the ticket system where if a staff member catches you doing like a good deed or like helping someone or doing appropriate things in the appropriate place, you'll...
Going above and beyond on the values, respect, and service. They're supposed to give you a VRX ticket, and you can exchange those for fun party activities.
Or raffles, we've done in the past. We've also done raffles.
Have there been a lot of tickets given out in your own experience?
Not as much in middle school.
Not as much in the middle school. The elementary school students definitely get more of those, but there's no, it's like the middle school students are still getting it, it's just not as frequent, which can mostly just be chalked up to middle school being middle school and just not doing the greatest things.
Mostly, like, the tickets from middle school will come from the lunch carts.
Yeah.
Other than the teachers themselves.
First off, thank you. And the other thing that I was curious about is if a student sees something... Hey, I understand you currently have a form where a student, if they witness something, they can go report it up, right? What do you think is one of the things stopping students from speaking up for other students?
I would say probably, at least from personal experience, being scared that then people are gonna turn on you. Because people don't wanna admit, like, that things have happened because they don't want their friends finding out and be like, "Oh, why would you support this person?"
Yeah, that's...
That's a challenge that we're looking forward to facing next year. You guys have been great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you both for all your hard work this year. It's appreciated.
Yes, thank you also. A small question. A lot of ti- not a lot of times, but some bullying does occur. Sometimes it's witnessed by other kids. Instead, how often does someone outside that scenario step in and say, "Stop it"? How much do kids get involved to say, "Hey, knock it off," where they just tend to step away from it?
From what I realized, like, and I've seen, not much. It's really rare that someone would step in.
Yeah, no, it's not, there's not a lot of people that will step in and actually try to help and get it to stop. They just kinda sit there, they watch. They know it's bad, but they're kinda too scared to, like, go up and do anything about it.
Why? Why do you, why do you think there's that component?
Well, it could be just because they're afraid of getting ratted out by their friends. Like, if they, if they fi- if the people who they're ratting out find out that they ratted them out, it's gonna be over.
I'm not talking about ratting them out. I'm talking about you witnessing something happen, and somebody just walks up and says, "Hey, knock it off."
That does not happen very often.
Probably same thing going back to fear, people will turn on you.
Are there currently any rules or any subset things in terms of retaliation for students who get involved, like?
Retaliation is outlined in the bullying law. Yeah, and there are, you know, it's, it is addressed.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, really appreciate your input and insight into things at the school, and appreciate your time and preparation tonight.
Thank you.
I hope Lenape realizes what they got coming their way. Two very strong, intelligent kids that are willing to advocate for their, themselves and for their peers, and I couldn't be more proud to send you guys up that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, that's for later.
You can leave that up, actually.
Oh, okay.
All right. Our second presentation, probably a little bit more uplifting than a presentation on bullying. For some of us who were able to come a little bit early, we just did a ribbon-cutting ceremony outside at our brand-new Pollinator Garden. The Pollinator Garden was a scout project, an Eagle Scout project, performed by one of our alum, Mr. Scott Procarpio, with the help of his scout members, his scout leadership, his parents, his friends, some school staff. He was able to construct a beautiful raised bed that I told him earlier, I've had at least a few parents come up to me and say, "I purchased that flower because I like how good it looks in that garden." So, I wanted to take a moment to say, A, congratulations, Scott, and B, thank you. You did such a wonderful job. Come on up, I got something for you. I was gonna bring it up before you vote on it.
And I guess that brings us to our first executive session. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Let's see. Be it resolved that the Stanhope Board of Education adopts the following resolution: Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances; and whereas the Stanhope Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Stanhope Board of Education, County of Sussex, and State of New Jersey that this is a closed session of the Board of Education, where the public shall be excluded, will be held at this time for the purpose of residency. Be it further resolved that the action of the Board with regard to the above entitled matter shall be disclosed to the public at a later date, and to the extent the same is not prejudicial to the interests of the parties involved, and would not result in a possible invasion of their right to privacy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Substances? Okay, we will be back.
Okay, can I have a motion to re-enter public session, please?
Motion.
Second. Second, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? Okay, moving on. Superintendent's report.
All right, it has been a busy month, to say the least. For this month, we have zero HIBs and suspensions to report since our last meeting. We had our, we have two VRS, we are VRS staff award recognition that I'd like to announce. Neither staff member was able to be here with us tonight, but at the same time, I still think it's important to, to recognize them. Ms. Nellie Boravoyev, I always get that name wrong, I hope I got it there. She's one of our speech pathologists, she's halftime here, halftime up at Lenape. Very simply stated, one of her students nominated her because, in quote, "She is the best teacher ever." And I think that that's more than what is needed to recognize her. She's quite dedicated, she's very professional, she served on my committee to help identify a candidate for our next full-time speech pathologist, and did so with tremendous professionalism. We're very lucky to have her, and our students are very lucky to not just have her here, but to also have her as they transition up to Lenape Valley. Our second award recipient is Mr. Brian Baird, he is our music teacher and band and choir instructor. The person, the staff member that nominated him states that "He brought such a new joy to music in the students, and he goes above and beyond to support them." For the HSA-sponsored talent show, Mr. Baird came to rehearsals the night before, offered each student performing time after school, the day of the practice, one-to-one, and was there to help cheer them on at the show. He works tirelessly to host the winter and spring concerts, which everyone in attendance always enjoys. In my opinion, as a fellow teacher, I believe his dedication to our students and community deserves recognition, and I second that sentiment. Thank you, Mr. Baird. Okay, my next, I wanted to thank, Mrs. Procarpio was here, she's no longer here, aside from Scotty's flowers. She routinely is changing the flowers at the front entrance. Wanted to thank her for continuing to do that, even since leaving our Board of Education. Field days were held yesterday and today, yesterday was our middle school field day, today was our preschool through 5th grade field day. All I can say is, you could not have drafted better weather for the kids to be out there. It was sunny, but it wasn't too hot, no rain, seemed like everybody had a great time, I wish I was able to spend a little bit more time out there. I did get a bug off of the bounce house, that's how I contributed at one point, 1st grade was very upset about that. Our Battle of the Books competition went exceedingly well, we had several students take home and place at the competition. Our 5th grade students came in first place, our 6th grade students came in second place, and our 7th grade students also came in second place for their, their grade division. Very proud of those kids, they worked so hard all year, and Ms. Pfeifer and Ms. Fair for, for leading that, that club. 7th and 8th grade trip to Boston went off without a hitch, students seemed to have a blast. They did walk through the streets of Boston in a very rainy day, but it didn't seem to, to bring their spirits down. Looking forward to next year, you know, we had, because we had two grade levels going on the trip, we had a little bit of an issue, we had to get, bring in a second bus, lot of extra coordinating. Although, we will have the discussions through this summer on our trips for next year. My recommendation moving forward is that we, we turn this into an 8th grade trip, not needing two buses, and then we talk about where we want to go from there. Traditionally, we've alternated, most recently, Washington DC and, and Boston. But the reason I bring that up is just to give everybody on the board an opportunity to kind of think about it, think it through, and then at the July meeting, we can have a greater conversation if it's something that you, you know, you feel passionately about one way or another. But again, I want to thank the HSA for bailing us out, so to speak. We did not anticipate needing a second bus this year because our 8th grade class was so small. We just went over the, the minimum amount, needed a second bus, and rather than putting the significant financial burden back onto the parents, the HSA paid half of the additional cost, and the district ate half of the, the other cost, so that we didn't have to make it happen. It's a very expensive trip to begin with. Kindergarten orientation took place while they were on the Boston trip. I remember that because our nurse was out, our guidance counselor was out, and our principal was out, so it was, it was me. But it was, it was great, it's always great to see the, the kids coming into the school for the first real formal time. They had an opportunity to tour the school, I wanted to thank our, our middle school volunteers for taking them around another year without losing a kid, which was terrific. They got to go into the kindergarten classrooms with the teachers, and the current kindergarteners, the future 1st graders, got to teach them what it was all about to be a kindergartner. So that was, that was really awesome. Just a reminder for some end-of-the-year activities, last Friday, we had our 8th graders serve as teachers of the day. That's where students got to pick, staff members to shadow throughout the day. It's not just a teacher, we had, Mr. Llama had a shadow. I typically have a shadow, as is Misty Cataldo, unfortunately, I had county roundtable that day, I wasn't able to participate. But my understanding is that it went off really well and the kids had fun. Our dinner dance was held also last week at the Coach House, which was a new venue for us, venue was nice, very small, still seemed too big for our, our class, just very, very small class. Thank you to Brandon Smith-Christie for serving as our DJ once again, and to the HSA and the 8th grade parents for all the work that they put forward in putting that together. Tonight's honor roll ceremony was very well attended, food was excellent, thank you. Thanks again to the HSA, wanted to specifically thank Mrs. Harold, she did the heavy lifting at that event, and it's, it's so nice to see that these things do get done because of dedicated and passionate people. Graduation is Friday, 6 o'clock. If you haven't done so already, if you can just please let me know if you were planning on attending, you don't have to let me know right now. Catch me after the meeting or send me an email, we'd like to make sure that we reserve seating for you. Don't wear too many layers, it is going to be very warm, I'm giving everybody the heads up. Byram Schools was nice enough to loan us a couple large fans through our partnership with, with Mr. Kopic. The reason for the heat is, the rooftop units in the gym broke a few months ago. It would have cost several thousands of dollars to replace units that we're ultimately removing this summer. The decision was to not spend that kind of money. Unfortunately, a warm graduation is, is our consequence, but we're going to keep the air moving throughout the day. I will be hopefully the only idiot wearing a suit. And then that same day after school, or I'm sorry, at the end of school, we do our middle school barbecue. HSA again sponsors this event, they've taken it over from when we first started it, which was great.
It was tiny when we started.
Well, when we started it, it was Dr. Nozinski and me behind the grill flipping burgers and dogs for the kids.
You could still do that.
I'm thanking you for taking that off of our hands. Now the HSA has come in, they've, they've multiplied the magnitude of the event by like 30, and they have parent volunteers working the grill, so I get to enjoy my last couple hours with our 8th graders in our middle school and send them off. And we send them off by doing a clap-out, we have the entire school line the path out back, and we send the kids through that lined path where the kids clap and whoo and holler and high-five, and send them on their way for the last time from Valley Road. There won't be any tears shed, I'm sure. That's all I have for my report, if anybody has any questions.
Questions? Clarissa?
I just wanted to remind everyone of the summer meetings, no committees, and then the July and August meetings. Let us know if you're on vacation or something, so we can prepare, or at least have you see the information prior to us going to the meeting. And then, the elections, I know that there are people rerunning or not rerunning, so let other, your friends know if you don't know, if you have anybody who wants to speak in.
I think we had one here already, yeah. That's all, thank you. Math standards?
So, the New Jersey Department of Ed, a few months ago, shared with all of our districts in the state that the language arts and math standards have undergone a revision, and the implementation date is September 1st of this coming school year. So of course, we've hired consultants, we've planned curriculum revision writing. everything is ready to go, and then just last week, we learned that the math implementation is now being delayed a year. So it's not required until September of 2025. That said, we've already identified our consultant, we've scheduled days, we have our teachers lined up for the math curriculum. We are going to continue with the revisions and implement them for the coming school year. During next year, as we've always planned, for the duration of this year, we're going to put together a committee to review our math resources, ultimately our textbook, the series that we use. We're going to explore others, it's been at least eight or nine years now since we've used Envision Math, and see if there are other versions, other series out there that might best suit our needs. I personally, as a math person, like the series that we have, I think it's great for our community and for our population. However, I am one voice, and I'd like to include some students, some teachers and some parents, along with administration, to review the pros and cons of what we currently have, and bring in some vendors to show us some other series as well. Yep, that's pretty much it for math standards.
Sounds like some fun for October, school points.
On the math standards, for algebra and specifically, can we coordinate with Lenape and Tech to see what they're doing so that whatever we're doing here, it is a complete feeder into them, Algebra II?
Okay. Jen, to you, personnel, curriculum, school, climate and culture.
All right, big title. So a lot of what was on our committee was already covered, so we discussed the presentations that you've all had tonight already and the awards. Mr. Hegman's been very busy trying to interview, get people in place. It is the never-ending job that he has, I don't know where he finds the hour in his day, to be honest with you, to continue to do it. But you will see on tonight's agenda, there are some positions up for approval. We also have, unfortunately, have to accept Mr. Shapazian's resignation. I am very happy for him that he is moving on to something that is good for him. I am very sad for our district that we are losing a pretty incredible teacher, but we do wish him well. I asked him the other day when I saw him if we could just hand him back his resignation, and he laughed at me. So I guess I'd be in help.
However, he is going to Lenape Valley.
Yes.
So, as a business teacher, so your children, if they're going through here, will have the opportunity down the road so they choose to go through that path.
Absolutely. Other than that, we discussed CSA evaluation. When graduation was, reminder of the meeting dates that Carissa covered. And that's pretty much it. Oh, there was an update on summer camps. Forgive me, I do not have my notes with me tonight.
Let me speak to it?
Yes, please, thank you.
A couple of our camps ended up being canceled just because of low enrollment. We only had a few kids for one, for the fitness camp. Ms. Pfeifer condensed, I believe, the four weeks of camps that she had into one camp, so she's still going to run a STEM. Our art camp is booming, almost all five weeks. Our Half-Blood Camp has a lot of students registered for that, that's a one-week camp that we're super excited about. And Ms. Herger is still running her, or in Gillingham, and English tutoring camp, small group instruction for students, I think, in K-1 through 3, current K through 2, future 1 through 3. So we do have a lot going on, unfortunately, we weren't able to get enough for some of the camps, but I think it'll be a good opportunity for the families to engage.
Thank you. Any questions for Jen? All right, Gil, you're up.
Business. One of the topics we had was the the administration wanting to go out and do an RFP on the attorney. And there was some discussion as to why he was looking to do that. And it was decided, and you'll see it on the agenda tonight, to hold our current attorney over for the next two or three months. So we've got a two- or three-month contract, at which time Steve will have a chance to review the RFPs and make a decision as whether to change or not. We talked about the annual adoptions and appointments that will be voted on. Construction update, the gas is to the building, which is wonderful. There seems to be no issue with us opening or having everything ready by October 1st, which I think is the legal date for the heat to be on in the building. That should make it with no problem. It was decided that the science rooms would be moved to next summer. That project will be postponed, not postponed, just moved, and scheduling better for next summer. The air conditioners that are currently in the classrooms, the district is looking to, the board to approve, once we go to central air, to have a method we can dispose them of, which is either donate them, or I don't know, auction, or whatever.
Yes, so I want to make sure that there's full transparency with the board. The units that we have, we purchased five or six years ago, with the understanding that they would last five or six years for our need, knowing ahead of time that we wanted to go through the referendum and upgrade the HVAC. The units are actually in really great shape. And although I'm going to be requesting that we dispose of them, I'd like to be able to offer them up to our school and our community, rather than throwing them in a dumpster. I'm sure that there are people that can use a large window unit, and it was purchased with taxpayer monies. So as long as nobody has any objection to that, that's something that I would like to do. And whatever is not, I guess, given away, there's a school district that Mr. Borgo actually used to work for that, he reached out to, that would be interested in taking whatever is left. So if you have no objections, that's my plan of action moving forward.
I don't have an objection, I do have a question. If we donate, whether it's an air conditioner or anything else, to a community member and they have a problem with it, is that anything that can ever come back on the board?
We're not donating them, we're disposing of them.
Okay, and there's the difference. Perfect, thank you.
Discuss the graduation date and time. Steve gave us a brief update on CUSAC, that things are looking really good. Looks like we're going to pass, it's at the state level, we're waiting for things to come back, but we may be one of the only schools in Sussex that passed CUSAC this year, which is wonderful for us. Reminded us about the no-committee meetings in July and August, and reviewed that the petitions for election were due in July. Anybody with questions? Thank you.
Moving on, Tom?
Sure, in our policy committee, we discussed a few of the items that had previously been shared from the other committees as well, so I won't repeat those. But this evening, we have one item to take action upon, and that's with regard to Policy 5111, eligibility of resident and non-resident students. We're presenting that for its first reading. The policy is inclusive of and extends beyond the minimum requirements of the law pertaining to student enrollment in the school district. Some particular language has been added to the policy regarding enrollment of students who are children of employees. We intend to continue that practice with some increased clarity of enrollment stipulations and hope to present a second reading for board approval next month.
Thank you. Questions? Okay, hearing none. Gil, back over to you, negotiations.
Negotiations, well, it's good news. We have an MOA, we have a memorandum of agreement, we are there. Salary guides, we just received them yesterday and one this morning. Checked them over, there was some tweaking needed to be done on both, but I can speak for the committee that we're very pleased with the way the salary guide came out. They did put some nice dollars down at the bottom to increase our starting salaries so we could attract teachers, young teachers with decent salaries, that was very encouraging. Paraprofessionals, we did put some dollars there, but it's just hard to move those people up to where we would hope we would get with the kinds of increases that we gave. But everybody's happy, and we're moving forward, I believe, before they leave, they're going to try and ratify.
My understanding is that they're going to hold a ratification meeting tomorrow afternoon before they leave for the day. So the hope would be, if they're able to ratify, that'll give me about three weeks to redline the contract, get it to you for review, and then I would try to put together a motion to approve the contract at our July meeting.
So we'll be able to start the school year with the contract, and that part would be done, and that's very exciting. It was a good negotiation sessions, a lot of banter back and forth. I think it was the first time we sat down as a board in many years of negotiating here that we actually had some money that we could disperse, and it felt good doing that. And I'm sure, and I know the teachers and those people involved in the association, we're going to be happy and pleased with the settlement of the contract. And we stayed all within the parameters that we were given by the BA in terms of how much we could spend, we were in those parameters.
Gil, it's a three-year contract?
Three-year contract.
Excellent.
Yes.
Is the increase the same for everybody, or is there steps for different levels?
It's Well, when you do, with education, the way that's done, if you gave a 3% raise, that's the total dollars that you spend on, say, just for the teacher unit. You take the total dollars spent on the teacher's unit, that moves 3%. That total dollar figure. That then goes back to the teachers' association, and now they have to put that into a salary guide. Because that involves increments, and not everybody gets 3%.
That was my question.
It doesn't work that way. I wish it did, but it doesn't.
I think your question, right, was more so comparisons of teachers, custodians, paraprofessionals?
Yeah, yeah, because there's different levels.
So we negotiated, the board negotiated separately for each of those three parties. There's differences in the financials, but we really can't get into that until we bring that to the board.
But the percentages were the same.
I was just wondering how it came about, that's all.
They were the same.
Thank you.
Still with you for Ed Services, if there's no more questions on negotiations?
I just want to give a special thanks to the office staff, Dan, teachers, paraprofessionals, that was my first experience, custodians. And to Steve for really making it simple. Someone like a rookie like me to understand what was happening, the why behind things. It made it really simple for us to make what we felt was best decisions for the school long-term. So, special shout-out and thank you to you and your squad over there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sussex Ed Services, just like here, we're just finishing up our superintendent's evaluation. It's our first year that we have a facilities manager, who happened to be Joe from here, is now at Sussex Ed Services, and that's a nice position for us to have up there. We've had part-time people for years and shared services, but having your own person in the building just seems to really make a difference in terms of getting things done, especially somebody who's handy like Joe, who can fix things that we don't have to go out and get done. He can do a lot of the smaller things. Our graduation from Northern Hills Academy is this Friday. Tomorrow, we have our Project Graduation ceremony, that's held at Newton Hospital in the Romano Conference Center. So I'll be at that one, I won't be at the one on Friday. A special note, we did get an organization to donate some significant dollars to Project Graduation for us. And what it does, what it will do, well, as great a program as Project Search is for getting kids, especially kids with disabilities employable, is that a lot of schools try to mimic that program, high schools around the area. And what they do is they do as best they can, they have a teacher in a room with a couple of kids, and they spend maybe 40 minutes a day talking about what it is at work, how to be at work, and then they find them a job in the afternoon, and then they work for a couple hours, and every once in a while, somebody stops in and visits them. Project Search follows that same ideas, except the teaching staff is at the hospital. So they are immersed in the education and the learning process all day long while they're at work, and they're learning skills. So what happens, schools don't want to send kids to Project Search because it's too expensive. They can do it in their own district, because they say we have the same program. It is by name and it is by structure, but it's not the same as results. So, we have a hard time getting some kids enrollment because schools don't want to let go and pay the extra dollars. So we just had an organization donate enough money that we can give up to 15 kids, any district that sends their kid to Project Search, we could offset that cost to that school district by approximately $15,000, for everyone that you said. So we're hoping that we can get kids into our program who can benefit from the caliber of the program. Right now, we've won national recognition and state recognition for us. We've had several years of 100% student placement. So it's just another way of us turning around and adding back to Sussex County. And a young person graduating from that program who is now self-sufficient is not only a great thing for that person in terms of pride and confidence, but it's also a great thing for the communities in terms of somebody that's self-reliant is out there. So we're very happy about that. And we're just moving into ESY now, that's all starting up in a few weeks. Any questions? Yes, sir. No, nothing about Boston, buddy.
I used to like you, you know. Now they're having a graduation on Friday, are they going to school the whole day, or is it a happy day? Because I drive for them and I don't even know.
I'm going to assume it is going to be a half-day, because the graduation is in the morning and all the parents are there. So you're going to have to check with them, I honestly don't know.
I'll ask in the morning when I drop the kids off.
I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so for my board president's report, obviously everything you heard here tonight, most of our time was spent on negotiations. I did want to let this board know, we had the conversation around regionalization last time. We're going to move forward with that committee to explore the application for the study. In the meantime, Byram actually did reach out to me directly and asked to be included and to set up a meeting for July. So I haven't responded yet, I wanted to let this board know that it does seem like Byram is at least interested in beginning a conversation and wanting to know what it would look like. So that's good news, and now that I put it out there, I will respond and coordinate with NEKONG and Byram and Lenape. And it looks like, hopefully, we'll be able to find some time over the summer to have our first meeting as a committee collectively. Questions? No? Okay. That brings us to public session number one. Only one member of the public here?
I'm assuming she's not going to speak, but if you have a moment, I'd like to introduce, this is Paige Strangeway. Paige is the individual who I'm recommending for our 1st grade position for next year. First of all, I applaud you for coming out to the board meeting, that's very old-school, and I very much appreciate it. Paige, and if you'd like to take a second to tell anything about yourself, but she just finished her student teaching at Green Township. They raved about her. I ran into Mr. Kazatsky, who's a vice-principal up at Lenape Valley, who was one of her professors. I ran into him at my son's graduation, his son was also graduating, and also raved about Paige. We're very excited to bring her aboard. You don't have to speak, but if there's anything you want to say, the mic is yours.
Hi. I'm really happy to be here, I grew up in Green Township, very similar area, K-8 school. I'm looking forward to start, very much so. Thank you for having me.
Okay, so that will close public session number one. We had traveling workshop reports, if anybody had any questions or comments. If not, that will move us to executive session number two, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Thank you. Okay, be it resolved that the Stanhope Board of Education adopts the following resolution. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act of Chapter 231 of 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Stanhope Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Stanhope Board of Education, County of Sussex and the State of New Jersey that a closed session of this Board of Education, where the public shall be excluded, will be held at this time for the purpose of held at this time for the purpose of personnel. Be it further resolved that the action of the Board with regard to the above entitled matter shall be disclosed to the public at a later date and to the extent that the same is not prejudicial to the interests of the parties involved and would not result in a possible invasion of their right to privacy. Voice vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Abstentions? Okay.
...
All right, can I have a motion to re-enter public session?
Motion.
Second.
Whatever.
Excellent. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? Thank you. All right, that brings us to our approval section of the agenda, starting off with the minutes for approval. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Okay. We are approving by voice vote the May fifteenth regular meeting and executive session meeting minutes. A voice vote. Any questions? Discussion? No? Okay, voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? All right, moving on. Administrative action items, a motion, please.
Motion.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay, we have items one through four on here. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. Policy action, we have one item on the agenda, policy five one one one. First reading. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Okay, education action items, agenda item one, can I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Okay, approve the portrait of a graduation document, attachment eleven, and up here behind us.
I'll put it up for you if you didn't get a chance to take a look at it. This is a result of a student committee that we put together. We had two students from fourth grade through eighth grade that we selected. It's a busy time of the year, so attendance was not as positive as I had hoped. But every time the kids were able to come, they positively contributed to this. This was so student-led, to the point where we kind of created our draft with only a couple of students present. And, you know, they really did most of it with myself and Ms. Waldron, who facilitated. And when we came back together, attendance was high the last one because I gave him pizza. We came through it together, and they were so... For those of you who were on the mission and vision, I can't remember, I'm sorry, it's been a long... Who was here on the mission? Matt was here on mission and vision. If you remember, like, we just took every single word, every single phrase, every single piece of it, and scrutinized it. The kids did the same thing here. Like, there were words that they're like, "I don't like that word. I don't think such-and-such is going to know what that means." So, we worked together, we changed the word, we rephrased some things. And, you know, I'm happy with the product, and those kids were happy with the product. So, the point of this is to have characteristics that describe a student who's... What we would want a student who's leaving this school to have. The C for Chargers, right, our... Wow, losing the words.
Mascot.
Our mascot. C for creative, H hardworking, A accountable, R resilient, G genuine, E encouraging, R respectful, and S spirited. And I really do believe that our students embody most, if not all, of those characteristics. So, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
So now that it's approved, next step, which is a weakness of mine, is getting a graphic designer. I'd like to create posters and for the school that include our mission, our vision, and the portrait of the graduate, and strategically place them throughout the building. We have to find a vendor to help us with that, but the hope is for the start of next school year.
Just say thanks. I mean, it looks awesome. I love the well-rounded qualities we look at in totality. It's really nice. Well done.
This would be a good one to put on a banner and hang it in here.
Also be a nice piece for the website.
He's already working on that. He's been working on with Justina's on website design.
All right, moving on, personnel action items, agenda items one through seventeen, and addendum items eighteen through twenty-six. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll give everyone a minute to glance through them.
What grades is the chess club for?
I think it was middle school students. It's being approved retro... We're asking for approval retroactively. Mr. Morrissey was approved for it. He wasn't able to. He ended up having a conflict. He asked Mr. DiUdo to take it over, and they just missed the process of letting me know to get it toward approved. So, he ran the club. It was successful. He wants to get paid, and in order to do that...
That's fair.
It's on the agenda.
Any other questions? Comments? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Business services, one through twenty-seven. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Seven will be very well received by many parents in the district, including...
Oh, sure.
Including the one, the great Oz behind the wall over there.
I specified that because I know who they're watching.
Any other questions?
One question on thirteen.
Yep.
Is that in line with our neighbors, like, fire and netcom?
I'm not sure, but I believe so. It's in line with what my kids are paying. And student breakfast for next year is something that's going to be brand-new to us. We're likely looking at providing a bagged breakfast that students can use as their snack time. Not necessarily opening up for breakfast before school, but then therefore students who qualify for free and reduced meals will be able to get that breakfast for free and eat it during their snack if they so choose.
I recently found out that my daughter has a gluten allergy. Nightmare. Do we have those type of dietary restriction options?
If... My understanding is if a parent lets machios know, they are able to create gluten-free or whatever options you need for lunches. They're pretty good about doing that.
Thank you.
I think in the past, we actually asked you to go through Mrs. Frank, and then she'll work directly with machios on that for you, so you have a liaison.
Thank you.
So, the snack time works great for the kid of five. What does it do for those on free and reduced in the middle school?
Likely during a homeroom. You know, we'll figure something like that out. I mean, we let the kids in at eight. Homeroom goes till eight twenty-five, you know, so...
Perfect. They'll just have to know it's okay to eat, because today they do not.
Yeah, well, we'll make... A, we'll make that clear, and B, I also have no objection to open the cafeteria up for the older kids, right, where I can have somebody in the threshold of the door as the supervisor. Whereas if I have a kindergartner in here, I now need somebody really attentive to what's going on.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Okay, next list is just annual adoptions and appointments. We have items one through twenty-eight.
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, real quick, and just because I'm curious. I get that leniencies are emergency shelter and we're leniencies. What if the emergency is one that encompasses both, and I don't really want to ever experience that? But if we are each other's shelters, how does that work?
That's where D comes in, right? Location determined by administration during an emergency.
Thank you.
Do you work with OEM to determine?
We actually, I went out recently with Ms. Waldron as part of her internship, and we reviewed reunification procedures. There are specific procedures designed for our county. If we have to then evacuate the building because of an active shooter or some sort of an emergency, for parents to reunify with their children. And a lot of that was driven by the Sandy Hook tragedy, because that was a complete disaster, where they didn't know whether kids had left, whether they were still in the building, parents were taking kids without telling anybody. So, it's a pretty strict procedure for that.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Yagnum?
Yes.
Mr. Muscatello?
Yes.
Miss... Mrs. Sharpestein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to new business. Does anybody have new business before the board?
Yeah. I've noticed, when you walk into the school, we have two beautiful placards that will memorialize massive renovations to the school. I know we have some board members that will be leaving us. They had a huge part to play in that, including Gil and Tom, and I was just curious, everyone's thoughts on maybe planning for another, you know, placard to thank the people that were involved in getting referendum passed.
You know, my wife's grandfather's on there. It means a lot to me. I think even twenty years from now, if you have kids that can see it, it still means something. So, I don't know how you get the ball rolling on that. Budgets just got passed. I think for me, right, because I will take the lead of the board. If it's something that you would like to move forward with, some of the information that I would like to be discussed right before we move forward with something that's ultimately a permanent change to the building, right, is like location, what are we looking to recognize? Is it the referendum? Is it the STEM lab? Is it the improvements in totality? I don't think that's a decision that should probably be made tonight, but it might be something worth thinking about and then discussing for old business in July. And all I would ask is, if the board can just give me direction, I would certainly take it and run with it.
Our former board president, I'd be curious to hear what his thoughts are in the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
No pressure.
Look, it's always, it's always nice to recognize people who worked hard on something that made an improvement on the community. If you notice, their names are up there from the past referendums and stuff like that. It's part of a history of a school. You know what I mean? It shouldn't be a large expense.
I'm not concerned about the expense in the slightest.
For me, I think it's really about the innovation space and the STEM lab. I think that's kind of the thing that ties it all together. Yes, all the other infrastructures equally is important if you want to acknowledge the whole referendum, but if you want to give the community something to focus on, the innovation lab is something that is, something people can focus on, and it's tangible, and they like it, rather than saying it was a referendum and we got all these things. But that's just my two cents off the top of my head.
I just want to say that when Randolph did their extension of the building of the high school, that every contractor that worked on the project was mentioned. They had a plaque, and it was mentioned on the plaque, so that everybody that came in knew how many people worked on the extension of the building.
You will not get agreement from me to put the name of the contractor in there on that plaque.
I don't know. I wasn't involved, so I don't know. You can leave your mark.
Contractor is the reason we're not renovating the science lab.
You can leave your mark.
But everything else, I am one hundred percent in support of. It's such a functional board that to be recognized and to be memorialized in the building, I think, would be something that's very, very much... The board is very worthy of that.
Any other new business? Old business?
Talking tonight, I know it's late, so I'll make it quick. I was not here at the last meeting, and given the level of importance of the conversation that took place regarding setting up a committee just to explore the... What's the word I'm looking for? Feasibility study. Commend my fellow board members, even in disagreement, everyone was very respectful and listening. I know how I would have voted in that situation, and while really agree with the idea of the timing of it, which, you know, has been brought up, I also know that sometimes you just need to make decisions. You know, I would have sided on what ended up going through, which is to look into the feasibility study. But by no stretch does that mean I am as comfortable with regionalization versus getting the information for the public to ultimately decide. And I did not get a chance to speak on that, and I found it to be very important. And at the end of the day, the public will want to get involved in this conversation. It's one of many if it ever does pass that committee stage. So, that's where my heart was, that's where my head was. I thought it was very important, given the importance of the conversation, just to share my opinion on the matter. I thought it was very important, given the importance of the conversation, just to share my opinion on the matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gus.
Any other old business?
Really quick and old business. I hope, and I know that there's no way to know what kids will be interested, but I hope it is an early-in-the-year discussion to try to get middle schoolers to replace Charlie and Dom and continue on with the hard work that they put forth this year to be a voice, because I find it really beneficial as a board member to hear it from the kids, because their perspective is certainly different than what we hear from parents and community members. So, hopefully, there will be middle schoolers who are like, "Okay, wait, I can do that."
My expectation is we'll follow a lot of the same procedures. I do think it's important to either do it in tandem or post-student government positions, right? Because it gives opportunities maybe for kids who wanted to participate but maybe weren't voted by their classmates. Gives them the ability to still advocate for themselves and for the student body, just like anything else, so you got to have people interested. You know, we'll put it out there. I will definitely speak to students who I think, you know, individual who I think would be good for the role. But it is a time commitment. I mean, you saw that firsthand as the parent of one of those kids, and they got a lot of other stuff going on, so...
I'm going to arm and hopeful.
I'm also hopeful. It was a really nice experience for me.
I think it was a really nice experience for the kids, and I can't speak for Dom, but I can speak for Charlie. She learned a lot, and she learned a lot from you, and it is very appreciative. And I think that that will benefit her going forward with other things.
I would say from, you know, a constructive perspective for me, trying to find the time, right? Like, it's that... I'm almost ashamed to say that, right, because we're here for the kids, and it's... And you should always find the time for the kids. But it's frustrating when they're like, "All right, when are we meeting?" And I look at my calendar, and I'm like, "I don't know, guys," like, and then something comes up. We have a meeting. They show up, and I have a parent. So, that's something that I will look to improve on, to be more consistent in the time that I am able to give the kids. But I thought it was a really... They did a lot of really good work, and when I met with them earlier today, I reminded them of some of the things that they were very responsible in accomplishing this year. And I think that their efforts are going to be felt down the road, so...
Other old business? All right, that would bring us to public session number two, but there is no public here. So, we can move for a motion to adjournment.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Abstentions? All right, we are clear.